It's in.
Meetings.
I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic, which stands by the nation under God, equal and just for all.
Roll call. Jamie Bailey, board member.
Michael Smith, board member.
Stephanie Smith, board member.
Brian Cristelli, board member.
Chris Haseman, superintendent.
Rick Scroggins, staff member.
Julie Moore, staff member.
Lisa Harrell, staff.
Carolyn Curl, staff.
Jeff Moroof, staff.
Ron Clark, staff.
Alyssa Maslin, staff.
Jennifer Cersei, staff.
Eric Smith, staff.
Ade Walker, staff.
All right, Bernadette's not gonna make it tonight, so can we get a motion to excuse her, please?
I move to excuse Chairman or Chairperson Bauer and also Delaney Hansen from tonight's meeting for second.
There's been a meeting, or there's been a motion made and seconded to excuse Chairman Bauer and Student Rep Delaney from tonight's meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Board minutes first.
Oh, yeah. Approval of board meeting minutes for April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
I move to approve the board many, meeting minutes for April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of board meeting minutes for April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now the consent agenda.
Well, we have one more, I think, because approval of board minutes for April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, it's a different date.
Thank you, Michael. I am working on two different pieces of technology here.
No, it's okay. I, I, I noticed it. I was like, man, is that a typo? No, it's just those two meetings.
You're right. Okay, so approval of board meeting minutes for April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
I move for the approval of board minutes, board minute, minutes. You know what I'm saying, for April twenty-sixth?
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All opposed or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now the consent agenda.
All right, before we get going on the consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion to dismiss the Jerry McMillan hires from the consent agenda.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to dismiss Jeremy McMillan from the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now the consent agenda.
Yeah. Yes. Uh, I, I, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. The approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, discussion items. Early learning presenter Greg Scroggins and Alyssa Maslin.
Okay, well, hey, uh, so we had the opportunity to talk to you about what we're doing with early learning at Elmer College or in, in our community. So the first thing I want to do, uh, in, in our presentation, we're gonna go back to some of the slides I showed you last year and just kind of highlight why early learning matters so much. I'm gonna show you some compelling information. Uh, you're, you're gonna see why it's very important. We have some presenters that will be talking to us about what they're doing. We have Alyssa's gonna talk about kindergarten, the things that we've been doing kindergarten this year. Denise Burnett is, uh, about ready to have baby pretty soon. She's not here, she's resting, so I'll, uh, talk about transitional kindergarten. We have Jennifer Sisneros here, one of our preschool teachers, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about our community collaboration. So, why early learning? Please read that statement. So our goal, what we want to do is we want to combat that. We want all kids in our community when they hit kindergarten to be ready for school. And so we want to work with our area preschool providers. We want to work with our community to equip our young people. Um, how, or, you know, young families, how, what can they do? What, what can they do to get their kids ready? Because when those kids are young, if you look at this slide right here, I mean, my goodness. Baby's born, baby comes in the world. Look at the first year of life. This is brain development. Look how much, look, look how much happens in that first year of life. And then look at that steep decline that happens in the, in the years to come. We want to captivate, we want to pull our early learning resources together. We want to maximize and make sure that our children are getting the most of that time so that they are, um, so that we can combat this curve. This is an interesting slide. It, this says current reality when intervention does not occur. So when kids, um, come to us, this is when they, when they come to kindergarten. If you're three years behind, look at that gap, it just kinda, they just stay behind. And then only fifty, what, fifty-five percent of those kids will actually graduate from, from high school. And, you know, all the way, then you look at the kids that are, uh, two years ahead. Look at this, you know, with university enrollment, eighty-one percent, high school dropout, only six percent. That, that again, that is without intervention. And so we, so we're kind of focusing on right here and, and these early years of what we can do to, uh, get these kids up while not losing any of these kids. And that's what, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're trying to do with this early learning initiative. And, uh, the money we invest in early learning, you look at this slide, uh, the best investment that we can make in a child's education is in the early, like, is in the early years. So get those POs ready, right, Lisa? We want to spin. She's, she's looking at me. Well, that wasn't a very, that wasn't a very, uh, good, good look you gave me, so I'll pass up. Okay, so, um, we're now gonna talk, have Alyssa Maslin talk to us about what they're doing in kindergarten this year. She's gonna switch over to a different presentation, old, from old school to new school. Here you go.
Okay, so here is a kindergarten update. Um, I wish I would have brought a badge book with us. I know earlier in the year when I shared about MBL, I brought one. I'm sorry, if you don't know what I'm talking about, a badge book, um, is kindergarten's version of mastery based study and how we can standardize our kids, so. Okay, so here's like the badge book implementation. This was the first year, our first go around with using our badge book we created last summer to with our students. So this summer, um, we definitely need to revise it. We forgot to do badges and we have more structural materials, so we want to make sure we update it to reflect those changes. And then we're gonna create a parent portal that goes with it. Um, and so I'll talk more about the parent portal in a second. Um, in the fall, our goal is to early work on parent buying and up training the parents in the badge with what that is and then with the portal. We want to be able to connect with families, um, at block kids about it, and then at that first conference time in the fall. Um, so like I have a friend who's struggling with like syllables, they should be able to do that by fall conferences. And so the parent portal, I'd be able to say, like, um, you're kind of like kind of struggling with this, but here's our parent portal, here's resources, here's something you can do to work on this at home with them. And so then we can use our conference time and train parents with the portal. Um, and then next spring, our goal would be to implement systems to support student and badge mastery more fully in our classrooms. All right, so when it was COVID time, we had to transition, and so kindergarten needed a website. I'm using our website for online learning. And so our goal is to take that website that we created and transition it and transform it into a parent book, um, like a parent portal. And so right now we're a badge book, remember, we have like all the different colors with the different content areas for all the different sets of standards, like reading has standards, writing has standards, SBL has standards, our math has standards. And so rather than have the teacher pages that say like Mr. Snyder's still, this is not from Mrs. Smith, you would have, um, each one of our pages become a content area, and then all of our badges will become a little, um, like a little tab, like a seal. And then parents will be able to click on that, um, and then they'll have it wherever they have, like their tablet or their phones. And so, um, on each, um, call it a little tab, when you click on it, if it was the syllables one, then it would show you when you opened it up, um, what the standard is, what the students would need to do in order to earn that badge, um, and then resources that'll be hyperlinked in it that they can use. So if they were struggling with syllables, then they could click on it and go to the syllables tab, and then they have videos that they can use, like in the car and to like turn on their Jack Hartman and start clocking stuff out, and then it can help. So, um, it'll give parents instant access to these resources. Um, the school that we kind of pulled it from did a paper copy of it, but, um, and they had QR codes, but the, the links break and then they're not super reliable, and then you have to have the paper. So when it's, you know, digital, it's everywhere that you need it to be. Um, and then when it's also on that, it'll try and send it for us through our webpage, so we wouldn't have to worry about transitions or whatever.
Nice job.
Um, this year kindergarten did parent events, we did one per quarter, um, and we did them on the early out days, mostly because we knew we're gonna be really tired after we did them. And so each of the early releases, um, each quarter, we did a different parent event. The November one, we all did a book tasting, um, and I have some pictures to show you. Um, we did a book tasting, so it was focused on literacy. And families came in, um, and read books with their kids, and we worked on some classes, worked on like themes, some classes worked on sequencing events, different types of literacy skills. In January, we did a snow day event, um, and it was kind of more blended with literacy and math, uh, different stations. In March, we did Buggy About Math, so it was like a Buggy themed day with different types of math stations. And then next week, we have, next week, we have VIP Day, and so, um, families can come and eat lunch with their kids.
Cause these are all daytime things, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so the first three were in the morning, it was like eight forty-five to nine forty-five in the morning. And so then they, one of the guys I already seen, I call my RSCPs, I have different family members who can get to come at lunchtime. They got to come in for it, so. Here's some pictures about the book tasting. My classroom was, um, Starbucks themed, and so Starbucks, um, donated cups and napkins and stuff for us, so we had a hot chocolate bar. And we read books in here, it's hidden. And so in January, I'm, they all wore their jammies and brought us stuff from home, so we did a snow day event. March was math themed, and so they did, um, like measurements, and I roped my dad into coming, so he, he taught, I don't know, so you're, it's a measurement. They, um, used caterpillars to, to measure things, and then they did patterning and sorting and addition and subtraction.
No Pythagorean theorem?
Not quite.
Okay, all right, just checking.
Yeah. Okay, so switching over to kinder tours, um, last week we did kinder tours. Uh, we, um, had really positive feedback. Um, last year when we did it, um, the providers came for about an hour and did on two different days. And so this year we, uh, transitioned it into one day, and they were in our classrooms for a little bit of a shorter period, but it was a learning experience. It was on May fourth. We had six different providers, all of the different, uh, preschools in our area participated in it. Um, so our preschool, our TK, Moonland Dreams, Wonderland, Carolot, and Moon Road, all came to it. Um, the TK and Elmer preschool walked over since they're obviously on our campus, um, but for the other friends, the best amount, picked the kids up and brought them over to the school. Um, there was eighty-two kids that were on the list to participate. There are a few kids gone and absent that day, but that was how many were got to participate theoretically. Um, they had a classroom experience with us, they got to join kindergarten for a little while, and, uh, the big kids, they got to go to the lunchroom and have a snack. They got to play around, and then they got to regular class.
Was, can I just ask you if, I mean, that's really eighty-two is pretty impressive, right? I mean, cause I'm assuming we're.
Right now, we have a ninety-four on the list for this year for kindergarten.
So, I mean, I'm thinking through this in every, every hat that I wear, but I mean, if we're serving collectively eighty-two kids in the, the district, that's a pretty, that's higher actually than I thought it might actually be, so that's.
There were some like kids that didn't.
Right, right, but I mean, even, but that's a really high percentage that got actually to have kindergarten.
Ooh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, it was really fun. It was really good. Um, kindergarten does a spring concert every year, um, since Mr. G took over the music position. Uh, he, since Jan retired, we don't have a piano player anymore, so Mr. G plays his guitar for us. And so it is this week, it's on Thursday at six o'clock, we have our concert. Um, and then kindergarten, uh, at the end of the year, when we start our year in kindergarten, all of us do, um, uh, like a back school, like a boot camp. Like, so we do twenty-six letters and twenty-six days, A to Z, and then most of us, um, end the year with a backwards boot camp that goes Z to A. So today, tomorrow is the first day, it's Z day, so tomorrow we're learning about zebras. Uh, but then in our countdown, we try to do a lot of community outreach. And so, uh, everybody might not do the countdown the same way, but everybody gets to participate in the community experiences in the same. So in that, uh, countdown, L day is librarian day, and so, um, my brain, um, to know my brain comes calling, come over, and she does a story telling of our kids on L day. And then C day is career day, and so different, um, people from different, uh, parts of our community get to come. This year we have a food truck coming, a dumpster truck coming, and then we have called out to all of our other people to, um, do it. But, uh, like last year, we had a friend from, uh, a nutritionist from Summit Pacific came, and our baby's in, uh, G Schultz came and things like that. And so then we lined up all their cars, um, and ran the pickup line, and so then we had them, um, talk with our kids about like what they do and why it's important, how they serve our community. And then all the kids went out to recess, and so they got to be out with all the people at, uh, on the playground, and then see all their peoples, and then we swapped, and then got to meet them. Um, kindergarten screening, um, this is our third year doing it. Uh, it'll be, um, in the summer this year. Um, we, uh, train all incoming kindergartners, we use the speed dial, and, um, the main reason that we do this to help us have equitable, equitable classes at kindergarten. Um, part of it is an exit interview, so they do the speed dial, um, with our team, and then I do the exit interview with families, and we give them my preschool supply list, and we give them my school calendar, ask if they have any questions, and things like that. Um, talk a lot about, um, uh, like self-help skills, like going potty before you can come to kindergarten, and don't fix the pickup parents. And the, uh, the, each of the kids, when they come, they get a readiness toolkit. And so in the toolkit, it had whiteboards and markers and crayons and chalk and scissors and a journal and a book, and some of the things that they can use over the summer to help them get ready for converting. Our PTA bought all the kids, uh, future eagle shirts, again, this year that they get to wear, so that's super exciting as they're, um, graduating, you know, on it. And so that's kind of always like, oh, like kind of moment for parents, especially with their oldest friend going to the garden. Um, and then it also really helps out transportation. Um, last year, um, Kayla and Heidi participated, uh, kind of interacted with me, and then they were able to get a head start on the routing for next year, because knowing how many friends were used for transportation and whoever.
And you'll do this pretty soon, right?
Yeah, it's the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of June, that Friday, this tour, which means a Friday, Saturday, so try to help families who wouldn't need to take off work necessarily.
Thank you.
Our junior teams.
They are.
Are you, uh, put a lot in this last year, it's actually, it's incredible, and you've had a lot of tours, and every time you have a tour, I've noticed this stuff by mouth, just to tell me, oh, girl, I'm a junior, that's amazing. So, um, so every time you have a tour, actually, so it's probably once a week.
Yeah.
It tells by, um, but are you seeing, like, are you seeing the growth, are you seeing the impact?
Yeah, like last year, we, um, we gave them the readiness kits for the first time last year, and this year, a lot of data, our kids seem to hire significantly than they did the year before. So we, a lot of that attributed to, like, getting, and a lot of things at the exit interview, like also our families, like, give them scissors, let them try, like, do it supervised, and things like that, giving kind of permission. Like, we have scissors, like, on our tables, like, they have access to them, it's okay, they'll be okay, so all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, I think that it does, I think that, um, all these kind of things, like, can be so connected, and especially in kindergarten, you have, um, whenever you have, like, their son's baby, their oldest, going to kindergarten, that's scary, like, my witness here, even though I was there, I'm like, try not to cry, you know, all the things. And so I think being able to connect with our family, then, and, um, I think the screening in particular helps families feel, um, like, just at ease, a little bit less anxious about their kids starting school, and even if it's like a technical kid that's coming to us, um, they get to see all of the teachers and see faces, and, and just knowing what the person your kid's gonna be with makes your heart just, like, settle a little bit, so.
Yeah, I'm just impressed, like you said, we had one that fell on last week, Ron State Board, that came over and goes, oh my goodness, uh, kindergarten classroom, he goes, I've never seen anything like it, that's incredible. He's from Maine and travels the country, looking at some of the best programs, so, just good job, I mean, just, like, just been blown away with what you guys have done. So, thank you.
If it's anything like the caliber of your, um, COVID website?
Yeah.
I, i- it, that was a hands down, um, impressive.
That's the goal.
Um, and so, um, that speaks to the quality of, right there, for me.
Thank you.
No.
I'm trying to explain how that would be possible to get to.
Good luck at the base race.
So, uh, last year at this time, when I was talking to you guys about early learning, we were talking about this thing called TK. Well, thank goodness, we, uh, we, TK's going really well for us this year, and, um, we're, uh, several months into it, and we're sharing some information with you. So TK, from, uh, reminder TK, that's for kids that do not turn, or they, they turn five after the first day of enrollment. And so we, um, had, uh, community members contact us, and, and we screen our kids. And currently, we have sixteen kids in our TK program, and we try to, uh, work with our area preschool providers, because we don't want to take kids from the program. We wanted to, um, cool kids in that are, we're not getting, um, a quality preschool or an early learning, uh, opportunity, so that, that was our target. And so, um, we hired this Denise Burnett, and, uh, there's, there's Parage Data, or something, Ressela, Ressela is bilingual, bi-cultural, and she is enrolled in a teaching program. And, uh, she's doing a great job. Um, we also received a grant from the ESD one-one-three, um, and so that, that grant has been very helpful, because what it, it, for one thing, it gives us, um, money to buy stuff, and we'll talk about that in, in more. But we also have, um, opportunities where we have a coach, Felicia Bernard from the ESD, she works with us, she took us through, it's called the COVID long training. And, uh, so we went through that training, I, I spent one day out of it, it's listed multiple days, um, so, um, then after you go through the training, there's, it's called Mitch Mars' quality assessment, that we, we completed that process, we're making an action plan. And, and basically, it's to make sure that our TK program, uh, is developmentally appropriate, and it's, uh, we're giving the kids what they need. Um, also, Denise, when I was talking with her today, she said, what's probably been the most, um, meaningful experience for her this year is the TK teachers collaboration, because there's multiple grants in the area with, with TK, and, and they also, what, what's a love they talk about? How's it going? So she gets to hear, uh, the challenges and the successes that are happening in schools, just like her, all around this area. Um, with the funds, we, uh, we were able to purchase some playground equipment. And the neat thing about this too is we're gonna put this new playground equipment on our existing preschool playground, because Jennifer Sisneros is here. We have two other sections of our, uh, preschool that's going, and so they're gonna redevelop this as well. Um, we also have, uh, she's purchased discovery-based learning materials. You should, you should see the centers that she is, um, she's purchased, she has, there's magnets, lights, flights, theme, the little kids are, uh, they, they're, they have so much fun when they're, and they're, it's, it's really, to watch. And we want to set it up where we can rotate these, um, centers through TK, but then also Jennifer and Haley can also rotate them there. So all the kids get exposed to these high-quality, uh, materials. We've seen, uh, student growth. Um, what's amazing is when the kids first started with us in TK and where they're at right now, it's, it's amazing, because I, when I started talking to Denise, she's talking about social, emotional. When they, when they first come to you, they don't know anything about routines and all of the little, uh, things about how the function of all these other kids in a classroom is very interesting. They've made tremendous growth, and I, I see your head shaking over here, really needs a chance, you, you've got to watch the growth. Is there anything you want to share?
Oh, they're amazing. I think the most wonderful thing is I know every single kid's name.
Yeah, they are.
In that list. They are so cute. They are more than little sponges. They're just amazing.
Yeah, it truly are. If you, if you're down, you're discouraged, let's go hang out in the preschool or, you know, your, your spirits can get picked right up. Um, also the kids, uh, they're, they're learning to work through, um, conflict, and that is a huge skill. The number one predictor of a person's success in life, in, in your job or whatever, is how you handle it when you have conflict. Because if you're on people, you're gonna have conflict. How do you work through that? She's working with her little guy, her little kids, and they're, you know, they're verbalizing of how they feel, and it's, it's, it's really neat to watch the kids. Um, are, as far as the learning data, Denise has learning data, she's actually gonna be submitting that to me on Friday, and she's using, she's using the ESGI, um, learning, um, tool to, 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 to show the word, and, uh, and again, uh, she gave me one, one story to share. She has students start this year, didn't, couldn't recognize his name, and now that student, uh, he can, he knows his name, and he knows twenty-two letters of K's, lowercase, and he just, just, just took off. All they needed was an opportunity, all they needed was an opportunity to have, um, a, um, quality preschool experience, and off he went. Because again, our TK kids, these, these kids, they, they didn't have, they haven't had, they may need to go through Stefan's program or others. I, I didn't know how to, I can fill the center, so I just wrote a bullet point, Ressela, she got married. Our, our, our parent educator is pretty cool, uh, that, that works with, um, Denise, she got married, she's working in our teacher preparation program, and as, as I was saying, and that girl is bright, and Jen's to, we were hiring her, and Jen's looked at her transcripts, she was rocking her upper level math classes in college, so, good job, Ressela.
We wrote that paraposition where we wanted someone currently enrolled in a teaching ed program, because we knew it was a paraposition that would relate with all of the student teaching requirements, providing us the ability to grow and pipeline our own teachers. And it worked out, and we ended up having, and I'll graduate bilingual, four-point-oh GPA, now, like, the, just the, like, we had our pick of the litter, I think, everyone for a parent job, every post of your parent jobs, but this position, they had like thirty-some odd applicants, at every VAS, to Charlie College, Grace Harbor College, desperate to get into the job that they paid, while they did their student teaching. So this position has become our pipeline into our, uh, teaching positions, in our district, our elementary school, so.
That's great.
And, um, also, as, as far as the TK, we've also been working with our area preschools, we've had a series of meetings, can work with Kelly Alexander and, um, other preschool providers. In fact, we need to have another one, because we need to, we need to talk about, uh, what, what we're doing for next school year to capture the kids in our community. And it's interesting, when, um, you caught that, the number that Alyssa shared too. I mean, remember when we were talking once, if you think of, uh, I think a group of incoming kindergartners, there's about a hundred of them.
A hundred, right.
And so if we're looking at eight, four, ten, that's.
That's, that's impressive.
It's not that, so we're there. Yeah, so, uh, let's keep going. So let's have Jennifer Sisneros come up, she's gonna talk a little bit about preschool, so let me show you.
Did not have a slide. Uh, okay, so the other two preschool programs, uh, look different, they're half-day. Um, Monday through Thursday, it's our older class for five-year-olds. They are considered an ECAP class, but also have kids with special needs. So this year, the percentage of kids with IEP is a lot higher, therefore, the self-contained special ed class, where some years it is a gen ed setting. Um, then we have, or, uh, they also have up to twelve typically in each class. Right now, there's eleven in each class. And about forty to forty-five percent of them are second language learners. Um, my program is the three and four-year-olds. Uh, they do have an IEP to be in that program. Um, so they all are considered a special ed setting. Um, part of my job is if I need to grow, for example, had kids who are on IEP, that that would be also my job, is to serve those minutes in the gen ed, um, setting for them as well. This year, we didn't have, um, any that needed anything other than speech, but that's a speech that polished us, and not my job. Um, which is the only reason I'm not doing that this year. Um, and I think that's pretty much, it, it's also half-day, two days a week instead of the four days a week. The older kids get four days, the younger kids get two days a week. So there is two different classes. So there is two different classes, which is Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday, Thursday. Okay, badge books. So we also have been working on creating badge books like kindergarten talked about. They kind of did their pilot rollout first. We've spent the year looking what that might look like because preschool is way different than kindergarten. So early learning is very important and different. Developmentally, they're not going to be in the same experience that kindergartners are. So they're going to do a lot less things independently. So that makes the idea of a badge book a little bit more difficult because it has to be with support. So that is the basis how we started it on. So we did is we looked at the five domains that are early learning. That's cognitive, social, emotional, adaptive, communication and motor. We picked standards because there is no universal standard for preschool, nor state standard for preschool. So we didn't get it easy. We had to pick them based on the creative curriculum standards. That's what the curriculum we're using, which align perfectly with teaching strategy school, which is the evaluative tool that we use. So based on that, we looked through what we thought would be the most important to be ready to learn kindergartners, which means most of the things that are in there are not academic. They're going to be those behaviors you need to be ready. So when you go into kindergarten, that kindergarten teacher goes, here's all the academics. And they go, so, 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 here you go. So that's the idea anyway. So this coming year, well, we're at the point where we're almost ready to print them as a pilot. So next year, we are going to roll it out a bit slower because we want to make sure we pick the right things. Or that maybe we need to go less, or maybe we're like, yeah, this is way too much. This is crazy. So we're going to fill that out this next year. And we're going to work on a teacher kind of like informational manual so that we can share that with the community programs as well. So that they would have the same thing we do. But we want to make sure that this is what we should all work on or what we'd like to work on and then share that. We ordered materials for the badge books so that we can start teaching our kids in that slow rollout. Instead of having like sixteen centers at the same time, maybe we have two or three. And we're showing them how to learn that and creating that independence for them once they know how to do it. So that could take us a lot of months. It could take us a few weeks. It depends on the kids we have. And again, going from three fours to four fives, or the TK is already five, looks a lot different developmentally. Okay, and then I think that's all the things on the list.
You know, one thing.
Go ahead, Sarah. I just want to comment on that takes a lot of bravery with you and your program. One kind of shift, I mean, not like a heavy load of hard work, but to build a program that you're not totally certain will be perfect. And planning perfection, knowing and know how you like things organized. So
Yeah.
I want to say that I'm impressed by you.
Thank you. Any questions? Maybe I missed something or?
Me, I just want to say how important it is, you know, that work up to kindergarten. Because I I think in years past, our kindergarten teachers are teaching kids all these social skills.
Yeah.
And some of the learning, the academic parts of it do not get that they kind of take a back burner because you have to teach your kids the social part of being at school. So I think this is a great way. That way, when they do hit kindergarten, they're running with the academics.
That is definitely an idea. We want them to be ready to learn as soon as they get together.
I think it's important and I love seeing it being led by the district. Bringing the pre K together in collaboration with the kindergarten team and to really think of that as that is early learning. That they are not a one or the other. And the closer the district, then it's easier for other said community partners to be able to join in with that because there's already a district level vision to create. So I think just the marriage of those two things is really powerful for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The one thing, it's not in our PowerPoint or our presentation, but the other thing we did this year is we wanted to host events to give parents skills, things they can put their hands right now to help them help their children. And so we got one event back at the height of ours, which we had two hundred kids that were sick that day. And it was only by the families that showed up. I'd like to think it was that, but I think it was some poor planning of this case. Oh, yeah, but don't forget that much. Word out. Well, hold it out. Jennifer, we find another event. Jennifer, she started putting word, everything short of having an airplane flying was the banner. But she got the word out and the the event was amazing. So Jennifer, you want to talk to her about that? Your our steam night.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't supposed to sit down yet. Okay, so we just, as an early learning team, thought a steam night would be fun. The teachers seemed excited about wanting to participate in it. And planning wise, Greg was like, as long as you can, then we can do it. So I had to go to each grade level and just ask them. And I really couldn't have done it without everyone helping. They, I asked each grade level to take on one center. I said, do whatever you want within this team category. Do something fun. Something you're already doing in class and you want to bring it out in the community, whatever you want to do. And I had some really amazing help. So they all each took it on luckily. So preschool, kindergarten, first, second, and third all participated. We only planned for fifty families because of the turnout being low the last time. And we didn't want to have a hundred things and four families show up. So when we got there, I guess my idea of how to get the word out worked because within five minutes of being there, all fifty of our things were gone. We were trying to try trying to copy more things and it looks like we had about seventy families who participated that night, which was really exciting. Feedback was awesome. Everyone had a good time. They were grateful to come. And the teachers had a good time, which is always exciting. Really, I just facilitated having it happen by reminding everyone, hey, this is the deadline to get stuff in. And letting the community know in lots of different ways. But I'm really impressed with our staff and how they took that challenge on and really showed up and did all the work. And they did a great job. So.
Well, and so moving forward, we have a recipe of success that we can replicate.
We'll do more next year.
Yeah, it'll always be four four a year. And just keep weighing that out there.
That's great. I know my my voice loved. We were going to leave. They're like, I don't want to leave. I'm like, we have to leave. They're closing the doors.
Yeah, and to kind of pick everybody out a little bit.
So last thing, we'll go real fast. We've been talking for a while. So one last slide, community collaboration. We want to continue to work with our preschools in this area and families, whatever we have to do to connect with people that are working with kids. And the the summit specific down there at the bottom, you know, we've taken a couple of different runs working. And I know we're going to connect with them. There's some great things that are happening. It's something specific to focus on youth. And I am sure that we're going to be able to partner with them to do even more things moving forward. So so anyways, there you go. That's a quick overview of what we've been doing with early learning. Can't wait to be here next year telling you all the great things that have happened. And so thank you for your time. Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg, Alyssa, and Jennifer. You guys are doing good work and it makes me kind of wish my kids were still that little. All right, moving on to student representative application. Ade.
Applications have went out to the high school. The applications that they have disappeared. So they're going off the list of the kids who bought them. And they're giving those to them and other students are also being encouraged to apply. So I should have the applications Friday and then once I get them all, scan them in and get going soon.
Thanks, Ade, for tweaking the application. Also, it looks good. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to communications and comments. Anyone from ETO? E E S P? E Copa? Admin? Persons to be heard or public comment?
No public comment.
Anybody in the audience?
No.
Okay, new business. Approval for varsity boys basketball to travel to Joyce, Washington, June third through June fourth for fourth through for a summer tournament, my goodness.
Jamie, I would like to move to just try to approve the overall travel A through F all at once. So we don't have to go through every single one of them. So I make I would I'd move to you.
Michael, how about A through G?
A through G, sorry. Is there one on the backside?
Yes. For Skills to your State or Ten National.
Oh, yeah, let's do that. A through G?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I moved to approve the overall travel of the new business A through G.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve all travel A through G. Is there any further discussion?
So I only have one question.
Yes.
Is this in response to the documentation we're now collecting and providing adequate to make you feel comfortable taking them all in one go? Because that new information, I think we've been had in Form K twelve since you've been on the board. So I guess I'll step in and Ryan. Are you is that the information we're collecting as part of those approvals now that goes in your board packet? Is that adequate enough?
Automated system to know that all the boxes have been checked.
Yes.
I feel good about that.
You know, and then also where are the fundings coming from for the various travel? And that's helpful.
Perfect. So I want to know, we're collecting enough information to feel you for you to feel comfortable enough to do.
It looked clear. At least in the H G.
Thank you though.
Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that, Ryan. There's been a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. So approval for girls' basketball parent boosters car wash fundraiser, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Is Tina present?
Yes.
Yes, she is.
Yeah.
You're on.
You're on. So is it, but I was curious of where this is happening at?
Toads.
Okay. And the typical donations.
Yes, and I think there will be pre-sell tickets and the car wash with parents there and at least one coat. Kids.
I move for the approval for girls' basketball parent boosters car wash fundraiser, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded for the approval for girls' basketball parent boosters car wash fundraiser, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Is there any discussion?
I just had a question. Maybe I'm dismissing it and I'm sure it's turned in, but there's not a form with this.
There is a form. I do have.
We, okay, okay.
Everything's been done.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, we just can't see on our end if it's been, you know, being given permission. So yes, based on that.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to know where it was at.
Yeah, okay. So no further discussion.
No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
Go forth and wash cars.
Approval of MOU between Alma School District and the Alma Teachers Organization.
Can I have this one struck for approval? It's actually made it on here twice. It's also under numbered item U. And item U in your board packet carries the attachment that we're approving. Item I does not have the attachment. It just has me. So I feel like I'll just strike item I, have a motion to strike item I, and then we'll prove out of you.
I move to strike item I approval of MOU between Alma School District and Alma Teachers Organization.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded to strike item I, the approval of MOU between Alma School District and the Alma Teachers Organization. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J, approval to remove board policy two one eight zero, parent, family, and community partnerships.
This is just a recommendation following Wostat. It's no longer a supported board policy following the update of state WAC and RCW.
I move for the approval to remove board policy twenty one eighty, parent, family, and community partnerships. Also, second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval for board policy two four zero two, English Language Arts Mastery Based Credit First Reading.
Board policies L through L through R are in alignment with WAC one eight oh five one oh five one. The State Board of Education Master Base Learning Policy. It just breaks it down, identifying that students who have mastered academic standards by grade level. And the district has the infrastructure in place to award that credit and earn that credit. That's also been one that is what thirteen oh eight. So it's now on state statute under House Bill thirteen oh eight. So it just brings our mastery based crediting system in alignment with state code and RCW. And I'd seek approval for, I mean, board policy first reading L through R are all of the same board policies. These are from Wostat.
K through R.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry, K through R. So K through R. I would seek approval for K through R.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve board policies twenty four oh two through twenty four oh nine, which is items K through R.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of board policy twenty four oh nine, twenty four oh two through twenty four oh nine, K through R. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. S, yeah, I've lost my spot here. Approval of board policy six nine seven zero, naming schools and facilities first reading.
We are seeking just board policy following the last, not the last board meeting, but the board meeting before last on the recommendation on the the naming of schools and facilities for following through. I mean, looking for board policy updates and the effort to follow through with the naming of the baseball facility. I think we had kind of a reading comparison last time. Is this or both representative of your concern and comments?
Yes.
I still like, go ahead.
All right, I was just gonna say, I thought this was, okay, the one that was before this had. Well, this is a different one that you guys talked about at the last board meeting.
Was before this was the procedure part, which process. So.
Yeah, the detail one we can change without board approval.
Okay.
This is just the policy that enables us to have the policy.
This is the actual policy.
Yeah.
Because this is not.
Because we felt the superintendent should have, say, a procedure.
Right, which was the last.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't think we even had a conversation about.
Actually, we've, I guess, finally we've had several meetings ago.
It was a while.
This one we keep putting off.
Okay.
Yeah, Michael was not able to attend one of the board meetings where it was on the agenda. So we tabled it to a later date. Today is a later date. I'd like to make a motion that we approve board policy sixty nine seventy, naming schools and facilities first reading.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of board policy six nine seven oh, naming schools and facilities first reading. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. T, approval to accept bid from Anatomage Incorporated to supply an anatomy and physiology virtual dissection table. Christie?
Yes, this is for, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, sorry. All right, so this is for um. The anatomy physiology program and our allied health program that we're. Um, working towards getting started. This is, um, we have S R funds to develop this. That we needed to use this year that will help pay for some of our staff, um, or two staff members. Um, and then we have extra money that will help pay for this along with some of our CTE funds. This table is essentially. Multiple cadavers with case studies and it also includes uh, pets and, and vet science. So we can use it in multiple ways. And um, it, this is the only way we would ever be able to afford such a thing. So I want to take advantage of it while we can. Uh, with uh, the intent that we're going to be able to incorporate it into our program in the next two to three years, um, and work really well. Um, so it is a hefty price tag, but I think it's going to be well worth it. And we have the S R funds that helps us uh, secure this. Uh, piece of equipment for our program. Do you have any questions on it? And I, I did go for the warranty. Uh, this is something that other schools and military actually uses it and a lot of universities and some high schools are doing, using it. But the warranty is for five years and what's nice about that is that um, essentially at, towards the end of it, we could replace that whole, whole table. Without cost.
Like that. I move to approve to accept the bid for Adam. And what is it? Adam?
For those people.
Yes, Inc. to supply an anatomy and physiology virtual dissection table.
It's a mouthful.
It is.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval to accept bid from anatomage Inc. to supply an anatomy and physiology virtual dissection table. Is there uh, any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Christie.
Thank you.
And number, or number, what are you? Approval of MOU between Alma School District and the Alma Teachers Organization.
We are just signing an MOU that just kind of clarifies the intent of our contract on identifying students in special services. And who qualifies as a self-contained versus resource and the distribution of case load of self-contained. Um, and so we're seeking board approval on the MOU. The agreement is to clarify in the contract, contract language.
And would it be appropriate for me to abstain if, no, it's not directly tied to?
I don't, I, you're, you're, I, I appreciate what you're saying because it impacts teachers, but your wife's not a special education teacher and is not. Receiving any benefits of that contract. I think you're still fine with on that.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so.
I'll move for the approval of the MOU between Alma School District and Alma Teachers Organization. Second.
I, I have just a question real quick, Chris. On this um. MOU, the effective date is September first of twenty twenty two?
Yes, uh, because it would actually backdate on um, how those have been distributed.
Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, work, study, unfinished reports. Superintendent report.
Uh, we have unfinished business. I think you're using the link under, under fish, unfinished business approval, uh, but my valuation.
Oh, sorry, it's not on mine.
It's not on our.
It should be in your.
I actually wrote a question here.
Where's that?
So that would be.
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business under A.
I, I don't even have a, I don't have a link to it.
Right. It's. I move for the approval of the superintendent evaluation, which we recently. Uh, completed his second review.
For review too.
For review too.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of superintendent evaluation second review. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for catching that.
Of course. Yeah, I, I think I noticed that the paper one and the online one were exported. They're, they're showing it right.
Yeah.
And now we're to reports, superintendent report.
Um, May seventeenth, Wednesday is our first ever retiree and staff awards dinner. Um, this team has been working hard, our child nutrition, our nutrition department, service department is working on catering. Um, we're. Hoping that all our board members can make us our first ever event. We've had quite a few staff nominations. Up through, our plan is to take part in the um, E S D um. The E S D uh. Uh, awards banquet. Done the invite for all educators. Feel that all of our classified or best drivers are food service. Um, everybody in our district meets the definition of an educator for the work invested into our students. Um, so we're really excited for our first ever event. Um, this was also part of our board goal. On how can we better showcase support and celebrate our staff classified and certified. In a way that represents everything that we're proud of everybody. I think um. And the board's comment was, I'm quoting this, we'd like to show thank you by more than ice cream. And I feel like we're making good on the effort on this being one of the board's specific goals and a way to show appreciation for our staff. So I'm hoping um. Our first ever event, we have a good staff turnout. But we want to make sure that our. All of our educators are feeling appreciated for the work that they've done, especially it's been a long year and uh, as we're finding our stride. So, May seventeenth, the high school, six P M. Six P M. So. Quite a few other, maybe just close down our spring sports. Um, so we're moving on to districts for, I'm going to give a quick update on how we're doing. But I'm not sure how we did tonight, but baseball was playing down. Get seat Catholic, first round, you're hurting them.
Yeah, we won seven to two.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it was two, two, uh, going into seventh and we won. Or at the end of seven and we won seven to two.
Tomorrow, we're going to host a. District soccer game against the center boys. Those two and track those two sub-districts this uh, Friday, Thursday. Just move on to districts. Boys, uh, baseball will play tomorrow. And probably in a little bit. Right, awesome. And um. Tomorrow at eight A M, FFA is doing a district wide partly pro demonstration for state FFA. So. A lot going on. A lot of things to be proud of. Our students are really great. So.
If you, you probably will, I was just gonna do a shout out for drama. I, I've heard just like. Nothing but amazing things for the production they did and a group of kids. Just the whole thing, so.
I went on opening night for the musical and opening night is always like supposed to be the roughest night and it was absolutely incredible. Um, I told him, Aaron, Zossen House and his team has just done a great job. That's for musicals for the kids. That's all I have.
All right. It looks like that is the end of our agenda.
I, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a great training.
Jamie. Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.